This will be a challenge. I said this year.
He's got veto power, but he's got something to veto.
Doing your stuff, you're not always by the wrong thing.
But he wants.
Yeah, I don't think he's gonna get this.
Because it's gonna come through.
Well, no, and then what also happens is I put my charge card. He's not sure.
Hey, they're gonna find some votes for someone.
He's in you.
They're gonna reach, they want to register.
Oh, look at this, we're getting gifts.
Okay, can you bring it over here?
Happy birthday, Jill.
What did you order?
Those are new tablets.
Candy, it's candy.
It's John's, it's John's candy.
There's a guy trying to name mine.
I'll hear a little bit late, John, but.
It's my birthday.
John's candy.
Hey, Kevin, they're on your charge card.
Yeah, I know, it probably is. Yes, dear.
They're new tablets.
Timely delivery, then.
Yeah.
So they're already talking about resisting.
So you must have happened then.
Exactly.
What's that though?
Well, and just.
Are you ready?
We just need, uh.
Really, just in case.
I'm coming up here in the judge.
I just wanted to check this, you ready?
They were all pointing here.
Let's start meeting here.
Have you been, you've been watching?
It's gonna keep, it's, it's, there's a spiral coming. It might take a while, but it's gonna show up. They'll start seeing the.
I don't have one.
No.
You know what's gonna be scary is.
Ooh. Oui.
I didn't catch that one.
Okay. I'm gonna call the common council meeting to order Tuesday, November 13th, 2018 at 6:01 PM.
There you go.
Um, roll call? Oh, roll, um, sorry, present, we all have to hit our present button.
Yep.
Oh, now my media won't wait. So I don't know, I could have popped up there, I don't know.
Okay. Um, everyone is present, so we have a quorum. Statement of public notice.
This meeting was noticed in accordance with the open meeting law.
Okay, communications, um, really have none this evening, other than, um, gonna roll into the public comment, and I'm certain there are people here who'd like to speak, so for your benefit, um, we have, um, a three-minute limit for each person. We always encourage everybody, if you can have a spokesperson, or at least condense your comments, and, and not be repetitive, we, we appreciate that, if anybody's even gonna speak. And if you are, you should fill out a form, right, Jill?
Yes, correct.
A form, and back, and bring them up here to, to Jill, thank you.
So you can actually play that. How did you pull that up?
Okay, thank you.
I don't know what's there, no. Switch the accessories.
This one doesn't say.
Oh, I don't wanna click that. Yeah, there we go. Interesting. Can be careful, you're always.
Quick question, Michael DePlante, did you wish to speak or not?
Different.
Thank you.
What the other one has, everything underneath it.
Okay.
And Kurt Satorius.
And Kurt Satorius, did you wish to speak?
Not here.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, with that, um, Pat Neiman, if you'd like to come up?
Is that Mike gonna be on? Scott, can you?
Scott will take care of it, and, and I'll be timing the three minutes. I'll give you a little warning.
Hello?
She is so, she's so anal about that screen.
They should turn that.
Yes, you do.
We cannot hear unless you use that.
Okay, how's that?
If you can stand closer to it, or move it closer to you, however, whatever works best.
You can take it out, you can hold.
Can you hold it?
How's that?
You can hold it if you want.
Is that okay?
No.
No.
Scott, can you pull it out?
Right up there.
There, alright, okay. My, my name is Pat Neiman. My husband Greg and I have lived on Bellevue Drive for 42 years. In 1956 or so, when it was recorded that Bellevue Drive was to be opened up to be a lane, in some point in time, no one could predict that there would be subdivisions, a school, and ongoing sports that would play a factor. Now the eighties come, and we asked the council for the road not to go through again. Our request was granted. Now, in 2018, we are addressing the same issue. There is Moreland, Bay Lane, Parkland, Lanin, Quietwood, all within a one and a half mile radius that connects to Janesville Road. There are streets that do connect into Bellevue, and they are Hilltop and Vine. Now you want to add Bay Lane to our small subdivision. Our road handles the peppermint craft fair, Christmas and spring concerts from the school, and all the overflow of cars that go on with us. Concerns were garbage trucks, and they're backing up. On September 12th, after the informational meeting, the following Wednesday, I talked to the drivers from advanced disposal. Keith, our weekly driver, he replied, "Not a problem." Adam, our recycling driver, he replied, "Keep it closed, I love this area, I grew up in Muskego. How about school buses?" I drove school bus for 17 years. I backed up a 77-passenger bus in my driveway for almost six and a half years, every day. How about a fire engine? Our daughter was a firefighter. July of 2000, she got married. Three firemen picked her up in a ladder truck, and took her to St. Leonard's to get married. You can't tell me that the issue of larger vehicles can't turn around, because they can. So the real issue is this.
One minute.
Okay, I'm almost done. Bay Lane gets a makeover. Does that constitute Bellevue Drive being a part of that? I'm sure a few of you have your minds set, but when you have the outpouring of residents saying, "No, don't do this," you should have an open mind. I would hope you vote no. So many families come down our road with strollers, dogs, joggers, our road would truly be compromised if this would be allowed to happen. And I do, I would like to just come up to show you, if I may.
Sure.
The ladder truck, they were able to come down.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, John Baylor. Uh, no applauding or comments, please. Thank you.
Hi, my name's John Baylor, I live on the last house on Bellevue Drive. I've been there for 27 years, my house was built in 1989, and while it was one of the last houses built, and so that street has been the same since 1989. There's been no changes on it, and we've gotten along fine with that being a dead end for 29 years. The reason to change it now, I see no good reason for changing it now. Quality of life, will it improve anybody's quality of life on Bellevue Drive? Absolutely not. Will it take away? I believe it will. So when you're voting, think of that, and thank you, and also go Warriors.
Thank you. Okay, Bob Ducek?
Uh, he lived on, uh.
Name, please, and ad- address, name and address. Can you state your name?
Oh, uh, Robert Ducek.
Okay.
When I moved on Bellevue Drive, I, uh, my number one concern was that it was a dead end, and, uh, that was 45 years ago, and I raised my children, my grandchildren, and I have a great-grandson now that's a year and a half, and I'd like to see him be safe too. And, uh, Bellevue Drive is already a pretty dangerous street. Vine Street goes from Bay Lane to Bellevue Drive. I go to church every morning, quarter to seven, and, uh, if somebody stops for the stop sign on Bellevue, I feel like getting out and thanking them, you know, because nobody does. And, uh, I also, uh, am wondering why you would wanna destroy our neighborhood, because eventually you're gonna have to build more parking by Bay Lane, and, uh, remove the baseball diamond, and, uh, it's, this is easier to do it now, and you could build a, uh, extra lane for the road, and, uh, it's, it just don't make no sense to me, because every event, we had people park all the way down our road, and, uh, it's not safe even trying to go through, you know, especially if somebody would, uh, open a door. But, uh, as long as I still have the mirrors on my car, I'm kinda happy. That's it.
Thank you. Um, Michael Decker?
I, I go by Mike, only Michael when I'm in trouble with my parents. But Mike Decker, I'm on Bellevue Drive as well. Um, I was here for the last meeting, and what I tried to glean from it is the features and benefits of doing this, and the reason behind it. And quite honestly, when I left, I, I s- I still don't understand the features, benefits, and reasoning for, for doing it. Um, but what I do glean from it is the, the extra cut-through traffic that's gonna come through. The second thing you can look at is take a look at the road and the width of that road. You can barely get two cars passing each other coming by there. We have a number of young people, elderly, uh, et cetera, that are walking those streets in the, you know, in the summer and so forth. It's kind of a shame that you have to put them in the ditch, these people walking, if you have two cars coming by, and that's how close it is right now. So by opening that, and then opening up more traffic, uh, it's a concern that I have. Um, the other concern I have is the, um, uh, my property value. What, what is that going to do for my property? I mean, I, I envision that it's gonna take it down a notch or two, and I say that only because I moved there 12 years ago, and I bought that house, I'm right next door to John, so I'm the second house in, and I think mine was built two days before his, but, uh, I, I, I moved there because of the dead end, and now you wanna take it away, I'm going, huh, that didn't work out so good. So, um, I w- I would just wanna ask one thing, I would, first of all, I would hope that you would not vote to have that opened up. However, if you do, um, I would like to ask you to meet us halfway, and at least make it an emergency access lane only. And I think I gleaned from the last meeting that there's a couple places in Muskego that's already happened, and at the last meeting I also showed you pictures of what they've done in New Berlin, uh, with that same type of a, of an arrangement. So, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Greg Maska?
Uh, Greg and Bob Maska, Bay Lane Terrace. We, we've been there for 20 some odd years. We like it, 'cause it's, we don't have traffic coming through. You just wanna put more traffic on there. Have you people looked at the road of Bay Lane itself? How beat up it is? There's no, the city's not taking care of it. I have cracks in front of my driveway and that, that are like two inches wide, and you just wanna put more traffic on there. Why would you wanna do that? I, I, it doesn't make any sense. We have, when the school has things going on, people are parking on other people's lawn and stuff, and it's, we, we, we don't need all this more traffic going through our subdivision. I, it's, I, I don't know what else I could say. We don't, we don't want this traffic there, 'cause, you know, our subdivision's nice and quiet, and I could tell you, in the summertime, I could sit out there, we got this big sign that says, "No through traffic," and it's like half a dozen cars just go up and down the road that you can't get through. You know, why would you wanna open that up? It's a nice, quiet little subdivision, and we would like it to be that way forever. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have Jean Satorius?
I question if the city thinks of joining Bellevue Drive and Bay Lane Drive as a need or a want. For the city, it is a want. With a dated idea, to open up Bellevue Drive and Bay Lane Drive, our, our street is filled with 35 houses. It is a neighborhood with children, it is not a cornfield anymore. A couple of us who live on Bellevue went door-to-door to inform each one of our neighbors what the city wants to do. I did not find one person who is in favor of this construction. I am not in favor of this construction. I do not want added cars speeding down the street, our road tore up more than it is, possibly someone hurt who walks on our road, and of course, our property value is on the top of everybody's list. My husband and I have lived on Bellevue Drive for 34 years. We bought our house on a quiet street, on a dead-end road. We wanted a quiet road to raise our four children on. I need our street to stay the way it is, the way it has been for years, many years, quiet, safe, and criminal-free. I'd like to thank the Alderman Hamel for listening and speaking up for us, and to my neighbors who have showed up for all of these meetings, and have spoken, and/or who have just showed up, who care about Bellevue Drive.
You have one minute.
I am asking the council to do the right thing, to vacate the right-of-way between Bellevue Drive and Bay Lane Drive. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have Jamie Gannas, am I saying that right?
Oh, hi, I'm Jamie Gannas, I live on the end of Bellevue Drive in Janesville. Um, I have an in-home daycare located there, and the reason I chose that location is because it's a dead-end street, and, um, it's a benefit for me walking children, obviously, to go up and down that street where there's really no traffic during the day, I mean, barely any at night either, and so that, you know, in opening that, it would increase dangers to the children that I'm, I'm walking. Uh, we also play in the front yard, which, um, you know, if it's, you put more cars on the road, obviously that's more of a danger for the children, so, um, for me, you know, with the daycare, it would be an advantage to keep that closed. Um, I also wanted to mention that it's, it'll cause, more traffic will also mean that there will be difficulty with my parents entering and exiting my driveway. Uh, the driveway sits very close to Janesville Road, so, um, for us to enter and exit, you know, if it's backed up on the street, we're gonna have trouble getting in and out. Um, personally, I also have a baby coming, and it's another reason I wanted to live there, you know, not only for the daycare, but, and raising a, raising a child, you know, I, I want that, the quiet neighborhood that we have, and, you know, it's safe, it's quiet, it's, it's just a benefit for raising children. And, like other people mentioned, the property va- value, and that the road is in rough shape, these are, these are all things that I think we should consider when making this decision. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, and then Don Smith?
Thanks for listening to us tonight, much appreciated. Um, I live on Bellevue Drive, I am the haunted house, the left, last house on the left, so on Bellevue, um, been there 34 years, I had a business over here in the Muskego Industrial Park for 15 years, um, so I understand how the city works, and I know in, with previous mayors, I've been in touch with them in the past, I haven't, uh, with this one, but, um, I certainly understand how the city works. I do know that you have somewhat of a thankless job, you do want, I think, the satisfaction of having a well-run city, um, so your decision's really gonna be, are you gonna do the easy thing, or are you gonna do the correct thing? And that's to prevent the opening of Bellevue Drive, opening up on the Bay Lane. Um, it'd be much appreciated, my family, my grandchildren, I did ask one of my grandchildren to come here and start crying, um, but she, she, she said she didn't wanna cry in front of people she didn't know, so, I thought I'd leave that go, but I really urge you, if you could, please, um, thank you.
Thank you. Um, maybe one more, we're unclear, Mary Lewandowski, did you wanna speak or not speak? You do? Okay.
Uh, Mary Lewandowski, I live on Bellevue Drive. Just everything that everybody has been saying, I agree with. Um, not sure if the engineer himself, who has suggested this, has actually driven on our road. Again, I'd like to emphasize that, that road is very narrow, and to have two cars pass is, I mean, you, one car pretty much has to go almost in the ditch in order to have two cars pass. My grandson and the other kids in the neighborhood, we don't even let them ride their bikes on the road because of the traffic that we currently have, and the road being so small. Also, busing, the bus drivers, when they come, they actually ride down the middle of the road, um, and the bus stop for my grandson is supposed to be at Vine, I mean, I'm sorry, Hilltop and Bay Lane, um, Bellevue. We, every year, we call to change it, because I do not want him standing on that corner. The traffic we have now never obeys the, the speed limit, which is 25 miles an hour. They're going faster than that, so we change it every year to make sure that our kids are standing in the driveways until the bus comes. Now you open that up, you're gonna have soccer moms and everybody else who are late for school running that road even faster. I just fear for everybody's safety. Please, Mr. Engineer, rethink, or even try to take, and go down that road and have somebody pass you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that, um, concludes the public comment period, so we will move on to consent agenda.
Approval of common council minutes for October 22nd, 2018, approval of operator licenses, resolution 95, 2018, approval of amendment to deposit and forfeiture schedule, and resolution 96, 2018, final release of the letter of credit for Belcha subdivision additions number two and three.
Move to approving, girls.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Yeah, you have to use the system.
Yeah, we have, it's there.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. Um, any requests to speak?
You second, right.
Okay, please cast your vote. And consent agenda items are approved unanimously. Takes us to new business, resolution 97, 2018, resolution directing staff to initiate the procedure to vacate the right-of-way between Bellevue Drive and Bay Lane Drive. Looking for a motion?
Not on the, our screen.
Pardon me?
Not on our screen, unless you want a verbal on this.
No, it's gotta be on the screen.
It's not there. Haven't cleared.
Hasn't cleared yet.
Oh, you, maybe Jill has to do something here, I don't know.
Oh, you can't vote?
It's not, it hasn't cleared.
The, the new business isn't showing or something.
Okay, try now.
Now it's on there.
Okay, now we have a motion and a second. Um, any requests to speak?
Sure, why not?
Can you press your button?
I did.
He did.
Oh, sorry, didn't see it. All right, Alderman Kubaki?
I live on a dead-end street as well. Our street is, is narrower than your stra- I, I've been up and down your street a number of times, I've walked your street a number of times. Our street is narrower than your street. If we ever had an emergency at the end of our street, I can't imagine how a, a, a fire truck and an ambulance could possibly get up there and back out and safely get someone to a hospital on time. I think it's, 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 it's incumbent on us to take a look at the public safety issue of this, and I know it's never happened, I, I've been at all the meetings, and I've, I've, I've listened to you. Having a narrow street like that just kinda bears out what I'm thinking, is that you can't turn a vehicle around without going on private property. They've gotta go on your driveway to, to turn a large vehicle around. The school buses, I, I don't know how they go down to the end of that road and back those large buses up, um, it's, it's, it's gotta be a real.
There's no, no comment from the public, this is a discussion here, Kevin, you should be discussing with the committee members.
I'm, I'm just saying that, that, that by having that a through street, it's gonna enable the flow of traffic to be a lot smoother. I think the police department as well would appreciate having that street go through. That's my own comment. Thank you.
Are there any other requests to speak? Uh, Alderman Hamel? This is the discussion for the committee now, there's no more public comment, thank you.
I don't know how to say this, i- in regards, you know, it hasn't been an issue, I guess, for as many years as that subdivision has been there getting the larger vehicles out. If my memory serves me right, there is a, a cul-de-sac at the end of Bay Lane Terrace, and actually, um, Bellevue where it dead ends is only probably a couple houses away from the intersection of Bay Lane Terrace. So actually, in regards to backing up, if they're on Bellevue, you know, I don't know how long that, that street is, it can't be more than a cou- couple, couple hundred feet?
Three houses.
Yeah, three houses.
You can't be, you, you can't be interacting, sorry.
Can't be more than a couple hundred feet from, from Bellevue Terrace to, um, the end of, uh, Bellevue Terrace, Bay Lane Terrace to the end of, uh, Bellevue. It hasn't been an issue for as many years as that has been there. I think it's a bigger, if we open that up, I do believe it'll probably be a bigger concern with how narrow that street is, and there is other ways for vehicles to back up and turn themselves around if they get stuck on Bellevue. It's just, it's too narrow, and I think you're gonna see a lot of traffic trying to use that as a cut-through. Um, we've all got complaints about people using subdivisions as a cut-through, they think it's faster when it really isn't, um, and if traffic's that big of a deal, there is ways to get around that by going to Spinnaker to Parkland, or Bridgeport to Parkland, or Woods, you know, or, or just going down Moreland to Woods. So there, there's ways for vehicles, as it is, they've been able to figure it out for 60-plus years. That's, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Any other requests to speak? Alderman Wolf?
Like, like Kevin, I, I live on a, a dead end, um, but it's a cul-de-sac. I, uh, I drive a truck, and I was down there today, and I pulled all the way to the end, and I thought, uh, it's kind of inconvenience, actually, for my truck to back all the way out of there. I think it being closed off like that, uh, there's no real way to turn around there. Um, it was built with the intent of opening, just like, uh, off of Cornell Circle, uh, we just put Penn Lane in, and there was opposition against that, and that's open, and I've not heard one peep, uh, about that being open. But the, the point of, of things getting busier, and traffic, and not in my neighborhood, and I walk, and I have the exact same thing in my neighborhood, and we all walk, we have dogs, we have kids, um, but we have a turnaround in, in, in the dead end, and I don't know how many dead ends we have like that in the city, I, I'm not familiar with many of them, I, I didn't know you had one by you. I don't think there's many where they just go into a, a, a dead end and stop, and you have to basically back out unless you have a Mini Cooper. a Mini Cooper. The one concern I did have when I looked at that was the one driveway at the end. I think it would be on the south side of the street. You guys addressed that during all the meetings about that driveway, and it's far enough back, and I didn't see really any notes on that. That'd be my one concern. It would be the one driveway closest. And actually, that, it's almost looked like it was built so that garage would actually exit into Bay Lane. It almost looks that way when you look at the house, you know, not that I don't know how the design was, I'm just giving my opinion. But, when you get down there, that house, it faces right out to Bay Lane. It looks like the driveway should go right with it, but it kinda comes off to the side and is close to the corner. But, again, I'm gonna go back to, there's no real turnaround point, and we gotta, we just redid the other part of Moreland, Durham, whatever you wanna call it. We just redid all that, and the engineers did a fine job. I mean, they went through all the intersections and redid them properly to all new codes and the way it should've been done the first time. But, again, I'm gonna go back to Penn Lane was opened up. I think that if you look at the notes, the safety factor was brought up, that they would prefer to have it open. I know, I know it's, someone's gotta take the position and bring up the points of not in my backyard all the time, but, you know, again, we all have people that walk. It is a narrow street. We have a lot of narrow streets. We have a lot of streets that have cracks in them that are, that need repair. I mean, we're gonna be in older community in areas. These are things that we have to address as a committee in the future, on how we're gonna, how we're gonna address the road conditions. But, I think you gotta look at the big picture of the safety issue there. One thing that really stood out for me was the fence that was there. I don't know who put the fence there. It looks like a city fence, and it looks like a city gate, and I don't know why the city would be in charge of protecting your backyard, you guys to put up your own fences. And that kinda stood out to me. That kinda makes it like, like the lake. What they used to do on the lake is they would put bushes up and things out and try to hide the access area so that it was, their backyard got bigger. And these are things that we should all share with, as a community. And that's how I kinda look at that, is that we kinda fenced this off and we made it like it's someone else's community, not part of Muskego's community. That's how I kinda looked at it. So, I'm gonna look at the safety factor, and I think the access was there on purpose. And the last thing I'm gonna leave you with is that I actually drove down Bay Lane, and I went down, and I don't know the streets very well over there by name, but I went down to the next accessible point, and I turned right going south past where we want the access point, or what's being considered. And I drove around, and I think I went all the way back up around onto Janesville Road before I figured out how to get back in to get over there. And that was kind of a concern for me when I saw that, 'cause, you know, it's kinda nice that it keeps it a hidden secret back there, but it also was a concern that it wasn't easily accessible to get in back there. So, that's some of the things that I saw. I just wanted to point out, so.
Thank you. Alderman Englehart?
There's a lot of similarities to this situation to much of my neighborhood, and in my neighborhood, we have streets that are probably as narrow, maybe even a little more narrow, but we also have some that are slightly wider. It's, many more houses are in dead-end situations within a half mile of my home. Several of those are unique, as this one is unique. We've had ambulances, fire trucks, and so forth in my neighborhood. I've been there thirty years. We've never really had any tie-ups that way. First responders have always made it to the houses. I don't see a problem with that kind of thing when we have so many situations in our city that could be like that. From the past, I recognize that new subdivisions are never built this way. In fact, as I've tried to study it out, I don't believe any subdivision has been built without cul-de-sacs in the last thirty years at least. My subdivision is probably halfway between that time and this subdivision that we're talking about. For whatever reason, that road was shut off at that point way back when. The precedent was set, it never needed to be open, because that's been maintained all this time. Perhaps they were expecting to go right on across where Bay Lane is and continue a subdivision over there before the school property. Nobody could give me the answers to how that happened. We don't have any history to document whenever this was discussed in the past, only the reference that has been made to it. But, obviously, we've lived with it for all this time successfully. I really don't see why we would change and put all of that kind of traffic that may come into the neighborhood that is content with the way they are. I'm content with my neighborhood, and they have more isolated houses by far than I find there. I went down and measured that street is twenty feet wide. That's a generous driveway. They're right, two cars passing on it. You gotta be careful. Are we gonna rebuild the street after we open it?
Thank you. Alderman Hamel?
I just wanna touch on...
Please, there's none of that here. Thank you.
Just wanna touch on a comment about Penn Lane. If I remember right, that wasn't put through to help, to help access to Cornell Circle. It was to help people to get out since Durham, Durham is now a cul-de-sac up by the school in Bushies. So, that was, you know, putting Penn Lane in was a completely different situation at that time, and I don't think there really isn't any comparison to that one and this one. That's also my district. I only had one person, and that was the neighbor right next door, that voiced an opinion against it. Everybody else on Cornell Circle liked it because it was just, it was an easier way to get out, and it was also to help those people alleviate those people from cutting through the condominiums there by Aldi Sandow, the condominiums there. So, that's sort of multi-purpose, but it was to help alleviate congestion, and it didn't cause any extra congestion onto Cornell.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Wolf?
No, I agree with that, but we were fixing a wrong because we closed the street off to a major access there, in my opinion. That should've been, that should've been, well, we could've, we could've did something there. And now it's not gonna even be a school, so, I mean, you can see that in the future, you know. But, anyway, that's in the past. The only question I have would be, if we did open it, that would be a two-way street. I don't know who was on the Public Safety and Public Works Committee here. You were? If you were? That would be a two-way street right there? It'd be a, I mean, are they gonna, when they build that? I haven't seen all the plan. I mean, I can see some drawings on here. Would it be a no right turn, no left turns? Would be some designations there? Would it be just an open road on both sides? And, I mean, there's a lot to be considered if we open it because of the size of the street. That was my point with, when I was down there with the, with my truck. I mean, that's what I drive, and to get in and out of there was not a pleasant, pleasant thing. But, if we did open it, there would have to be some kind of governing on what we can and can't do on that intersection, or at least at certain times, you know. So, that'd be my last comment.
Okay, thank you. I just wanna jump in real quick because I didn't clarify from the beginning. The primary reason this item came to council is because the committee requested vacating a road right-of-way, and I'm sure our city attorney can jump in, but that's actually a pretty big deal. There's time and cost involved in doing that, and it's a kind of a forever decision. And as we've talked internally, and I have to be fair at least, I'm not saying, you know, connecting the road, and that's a different topic. But, vacating the right-of-way, you're saying forever going forward and tying the hands of a future council. No one knows if there'll still be a school down there someday. No one knows if there'll be an autistic child or a deaf child on Bellevue that they prefer that the road be open. Nobody knows what the future brings. So, I would caution you on that particular thing, not to mention what's involved. It's unusual, if the attorney wants to jump in, it's unusual that a city vacates a right-of-way. It's not a common practice.
Well, it is a vacation...
Well, it can happen, but yes.
Yeah, it can happen. I mean, it is a legal process. It's not the easiest thing to do in the world. You need to have a public hearing. You need to get Waukesha County involved. You need to do resolutions. All of that stuff needs to be done, which leads me to believe, and I, you know, if you just wanted to not connect it, why not just not connect it and forget the vacation part? It sounds like, from what Johns and all these people are saying, it's been this way forever. So, why not just act like this didn't happen and leave it alone if you don't wanna connect, and just don't take that extra step to do the vacation?
Please, none of that. So, that's an option out there, but it's, the vacation probably is more concerning because it's a big decision going forward and a big process. Community, we're past this. Yes, sorry. Okay, so Alderman Borgman?
To do it without the vacation is just to kick the can down the road. They said that this was done how many years ago? Somebody that they, they've done it before, and now we've done it again, so why wouldn't another council be doing it in the future? So, why don't we just get it done with and solve the problem, so it doesn't come back to another council? That was the whole reason to say that it was, or to propose the vacation. And really, you know, yes, there is, there is some cost involved, but we've done this twice, two or three times since I can remember since I've been here, and it was never, never, never was the overriding concern, the cost of doing this.
I don't think it's the cost as much as the forever decision. Alderman Wolf?
Well, that would be my question. Like, I mean, you brought up a great point about the school. There's a reason that was there, and it just never was exercised. It looks like it should be a road running through. I mean, it does. I mean, good or bad, like me or not for saying that, it looks like a road should go through there. But, to give up the rights to that area, I'm not sure that's what we wanna do. I think if we don't wanna open that road up, it's a different conversation than giving up the rights, 'cause we got two schools closing right now in the area. You know, and if you look at statistics with schools, the enrollment is on the decline. So, what's to say that we're gonna keep these schools? I mean, we might condense schools in fifty years from now. It might be different, you know, that you might. So, I don't know what the process would be to unvacate that. Is that, is that an easy thing to do?
That's one thing I probably should've said. If you vacate, it's kind of done. You've now given the land back. If you wanted to...
Back to?
The homeowners.
Not back, you'd give it to them.
I mean, you're giving it to the homeowners. I'm sorry, not back.
Well, that piece going down to Bay Lane wouldn't be a homeowner's piece of property.
It'd be go...
City property there?
It's a, no.
We'd be getting rid of it entirely.
It'd be go one-half to each homeowner on each side.
Okay, yeah, that's right. We did that on, over by the school when they did that piece over there.
They don't own all the way out to Bay Lane, though?
No, there's an easement there.
There's a right-of-way.
So, they'd have some cost in this process probably too, but...
But, just so you know, if, if you wanted it back in the future, like Alderman Wolf is saying, how do you undo?
Buy it.
You gotta buy it or eminent domain it, or, and that's a lot of...
Which is, yeah, not a good thing.
So, I think if you vacate it, you are saying you're done, as opposed to, nobody knows what's gonna happen in ten years, and I think you gotta make that decision as to, if you're gonna look to the future and you're going to say, "We're never gonna do anything with it," then you're kinda done.
Alderman Kubaki?
I agree with you, Alderman Wolf, that never say never. You never know what's gonna happen in the area in the future. You hate to slam the door on a future council. If, leave it the way it is. If in the future, something transpires where it would benefit the neighborhood better to have that road open, then you always have that door open. So, I agree. Let's not vacate, but leave it the way it is.
There'd have to be an amendment to the, just so you know.
I got one more comment on here. If we do do the, we are gonna do the road through there, we should have some type of a proper trail running through that section as a walkway across or something, 'cause right now, it's just kinda a little fence and whatever, you know.
Did you press him?
I mean, it doesn't look like it's, I don't know what we would do there engineering-wise. Just a little, I mean, we keep that just the way it is and keep that fence there, and that's it?
Did you, Scott, I think he's asking a question. You better come up to the microphone. Can you also...
If we close it off.
When you, and done answering that, just came up, is that road any narrower than other roads? But, go ahead with his...
Okay, I'll give you a couple things. Just, let's talk about the fence, all right? The fence that's along there is a city-owned fence, just to let everyone know. The game plan for this was to go to every homeowner's along that area. And what the plan of attack with this project would be, do you want a fence or not? If the homeowner said yes, we would build them a fence similar to what we did on Moreland Road, but we would put it on their property, and would, like, kind of like, the hot item is like a double-sided wood fence, so it looks nice on both sides of the fence, but we put it on the homeowner's property, and we give it to them, and we would have one year that the city would maintain it. After that fact, that would be the fence for the homeowner. So, that was the plan of attack for that. If we were going to, we're talking about the trail. If we are gonna connect the road, there's no more trail. I'm just...
Well, if you connect it, that makes sense.
Because there's no more trail. It doesn't block. If we are moving to vacate it, I'm just looking, telling you what to do, is, there's a five, what I would do is, off the right-of-way, do a five-foot strip. That strip would then go to, split it and go to both homeowners north and south of that road, which means I can't do a trail anymore, 'cause the city doesn't own that property. So, the trail would be ripped up. I'm FYI, because we don't, we can't continue that trail through. Then, in that area, to make sure, I would have drainage working, I would probably make sure that all the ditches work really good in there, 'cause we're kinda keeping a rural area, so that in between Bellevue and Bay Lane, I'm gonna use that and improve the ditches as much as I can to make storm sewer work, but I can't put a trail in there because then I would have to get an easement back to those two homeowners who are there over there. So, you see how it works with the vacation. Once it's done, we're out of the game. So, I'm taking that trail out, and the fence will be, will be gone too.
There is a trail there now?
It's like a little path.
A little walkway.
And there's a gate.
I'm looking at more, something more professional, I think, just for that little strip. Something like a little landing, 'cause if you have people walking there on a new road and going to a school, you wanna make sure there's a pad for safety. That's what I'm looking at.
If we would look at doing that, again, remember, on the east side, the plan is always to put a walkway path along the hallway of...
On the east side, right.
Of Bay Lane, by the school.
But, you're gonna have, you're gonna have crosswalk there.
We would have crosswalks in certain cases across intersections, which would make sense.
But, there's already, the way that's set up, if we don't vacate it, but we just don't build a road there, we would want some kind of a safety spot there, is what I'm looking at.
Yeah, but I would look at...
Kinda like what we did at Penn Lane, we put the trail in extra...
Correct, but, but we would look at it, if we vacate it, that trail's gone. I wanna make sure everyone understands, 'cause I can't build a trail on private property. And I would look at that area of like, I gotta increase my ditches. I gotta make sure all the stormwater works. Now, I have a little sliver in here. I'm gonna make sure it works good, you know, everything, and, but now, so that's one thing, and now you understand what we're planning to do with the fence. It's no similar than what we did on Moreland Road. I think we did a wood fence, and we gave it to the property owners, and then we maintained it for a year. So, that was the plan of it. Any other questions? Tom?
And that's not a guaranteed, 'cause we have to talk about that more. Okay, Alderman Capusta?
Thank you. I think there's been a lot of pros and cons out here tonight, but I think one of the things you can't dismiss is we got a lot of people who live on that lane, and they're fine with the way it is. I don't think we can disregard that. So, I think that should be really a major contributor in how we decide on how to vote on this thing.
Thank you. Okay, any other requests to speak? Otherwise, we will... Alderman Kubaki?
I'd like to amend the motion to, to not vacate that strip, but to leave it and not hook it up to Bay Lane at this point.
Not connect and not vacate.
Right, not connect and not vacate.
You need a second if you're gonna do that.
Um, we've got one. Alderman Borgman's second, and I, or is that the original? I'm sorry.
I pushed your buttons.
Eileen, can you push your button then?
Well, Kevin's has to push.
Oh, yeah, Kevin, you have to do yours first.
Well, you do amend, okay.
Okay.
And now Eileen, okay.
Okay, we have a motion, I mean, to amend as stated in a second. Is there any requests to speak on the amendment? Okay, please cast your vote on the amendment. Alderman Kubaki, you need to vote. Thank you. Alderman Kobaki, you need to vote, thank you. The amendment is approved unanimously, so now you will be casting your vote on the resolution as amended.
Can you state that once again, so everybody means the road?
The amendment was approved unanimously, which means the road will not be connected, but there will be no vacation, the city will maintain ownership of it, of that right-of-way. And now you will cast your vote on the resolution as amended.
We'll wait till she shows up and clear. No, here we go. Here we go.
And that is approved unanimously. Thank you, everyone, and we don't need applause. Okay, we are going to now move into the rest of the agenda, the new business, I mean, I'm sorry, unfinished business. Ordinance 1422, an ordinance to amend the zoning map and 2020 comprehensive plan of the city of Muskego. P.I. 1 to B. 3 for the portion of tax, is this our property? Yes, our parks property, it doesn't state that, I wish it would.
For which property?
This is our parks property, so we need a motion. As soon as, I think, I don't know if you have it up. I might be ahead of you here.
Can you not do it?
This is still up here, the old one.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second, to approve ordinance 1422. Is there a request to speak? Okay, please cast your vote. Is approved unanimously. And if you could kindly step out in the hall to chat and hug and whatever else, we'd appreciate it. Thank you. Review of committee reports?
Finance Committee, October 9th, Plan Commission, October 2nd, Parks and Conservation Committee, October 2nd as well.
Thank you. And then we have first reading of ordinances and possible second reading if rules are waived. Ordinance 1423, an ordinance to amend Chapter 26322 of the City of Muskego Municipal Code, disposal of abandoned or unclaimed personal property. Ordinance 1424, an ordinance to amend Chapter 263. Gentlemen, can I please ask you to leave the room? Thank you, officer.
And that door's got to stay open?
And that door has to stay open. Scott, somebody get that door. Okay, back to ordinance 1424, an ordinance to amend Chapter 26323 of the City of Muskego Municipal Code, use of cigarettes, nicotine, tobacco, and vapor products restricted. Takes us to voucher approval.
Motion to approve utility vouchers, the amount of $52,053.09.
You have to press-
We need buttons.
Motion. It's not up there.
We need buttons.
Well, you're falling behind.
We need buttons.
Okay, am I supposed to push motion or are we voting?
Motion.
Motion first.
There's no motion up there.
I went to yes.
Me, too.
There we go, okay. Nope, now he went back.
No, something's not right.
That went back. Yeah, I had it up there for a second, but it disappeared. There you go.
Now, motion. We need a second. Thank you, Alderman Hamel. Any requests to speak? Okay, please cast your vote on utility vouchers.
I forgot what they were.
Approved unanimously. You can do-
Am I have to push motion first?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, approved unanimously. Now you've got to go to the next one. So Jill, you've got to move that. There we go.
Okay, motion approved, I'm sorry, there's no tax vouchers. Motion to approve general fund vouchers, the amount of $1,160,724.39.
And we have a second. Any requests to speak? Please cast your vote. Approved unanimously.
Motion to approve wire transfers, the amount of $333,343.28.
And we have a second. Any requests to speak? Please cast your vote.
You know, I should say that's for payroll transmittals.
Thank you. Please cast your vote. Approved unanimously. You already did, thank you. Okay, city official reports, nothing this evening. Communications and miscellaneous business is authorized by law. We have people waiting for a closed session, so if you have no updates, does anyone have an update for any of these items?
No.
Appreciate it, thank you. Closed session? We're going to do each one separate, right?
Yes.
Okay. Following conclusion of consideration of the above portion of its regularly scheduled agenda, the common council will need to vote on a motion to convene in closed session for discussion action relative to Boxhorn, Pol barn, facility lease and eviction update, and to take such further action as may be necessary and appropriate with respect to such matters. A closed session for the above purpose is authorized pursuant to the provisions of 19.85, Pren. 1, Pren. G. of the Wisconsin statutes, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. Upon conclusion of the closed session, the common council will convene in open session to consider its public agenda, including motions to recommend approval or rejection of the above listed deliberations or any of the public agenda items that have not been acted upon.
You going to take a vote on this one and then read the other one?
Oh, is it, okay, we need a motion for this one? We have a motion and a second. Please cast your vote. Approved unanimously for the first closed session. You want me to read it?
No, I can do it.
Following conclusion of consideration of the above portion of its regularly scheduled agenda, the common council will need to vote on a motion to convene in closed session for discussion action relative to Walmart versus City of Muskego proposed settlement regarding 2017 and 2018 tax assessments, and to take such further action as may be necessary and appropriate with respect to such matters. A closed session for the above purpose is authorized pursuant to the provisions of 19.85, Pren. 1, Pren. G. of the Wisconsin statutes, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. Upon conclusion of the closed session, the common council will convene in open session to consider its public agenda, including motions to recommend approval or rejection of the above listed deliberations or any of the public agenda items that have not been acted upon. Okay, we need a motion. And we have motion and second. Please cast your vote.
His hasn't changed over, still on the net.
Doesn't work.
It's reconnecting.
Oh.
Oh, it just started to reconnect. There we go.
There we go, okay. And that closed session is approved unanimously.
Going to go back here.
I got to turn off.
Do you want that closed?
Yeah, lock the, I would lock them all.
So you can have some security.
I said this is where they get competing and I really think people are getting subbed out. This is not going to even play. It's 16 punch hammers.
I would have to be like at least three times.
The four seats you do is close the road or change the road or.
Fire somebody.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, anything with the, anything with jeans.
Thanks very much.
Yep. This door locks. That's why.
Oh, it does?
Yeah, this one just, the lock doesn't work yet.
It doesn't? Okay.
That's why we don't have lock.
Yeah.
Boy, that group is a lot of work.
Bob, you're, you're the hero of the day.
Even if I need the sun.
Technically, that won't.
Yep. I turned mine on. I turned some of those on.
To get in there when I drove around.
Where are we at now? Just the end.
Backyard, that's what that was. That's a fine example, not in my backyard. Not saying there's anything wrong.
There's like nothing.
So all you gotta do is, yeah.
That's all, future agenda items.
Yeah.
Okay. So we're, we've reconvened into open session. Future agenda items, reconsiderations. I need a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.
Okay.
That's pretty much just four houses.
What is it, seven thirty or eight?
Twenty houses involved.
Seven thirty.
Eight thirty, oh my god.
But that, no, that clock. Gotta get all the joy.
I emailed him.
Oh, that's good.
They do that. They gotta put a pass there.
If I don't email him, I can't.
Right.
I mean, this is real.
Trail just stopped or you gotta have something on that road. But then, that's, that's what I'm concerned.
Hey Scott, I think these are Adam's deliveries that arrived. Do you want to take them?
So when you see plans or something, you see plans out there, you say, hey, we need to open it. Cause you got kids that are crossing the street, so they can't just. You know, you could have, you could have ten kids crossing, you know?
I know, we're. Somebody, somebody that wanted. The last, what, one meeting? Last one meeting?
Yeah.
Are you okay? And he, I, no, not if it's true.
Somebody's gotta set that clock back.
Yeah, we have to take it down.
Oh, you mean.
I was gonna say, I can't be there late. I don't see.
This should automatic. You should have one of those military clocks there.
Run over ends, he's always kidding me.
Digital should have went in.